Start the meeting for January 5th, 2021 Frontier Regional, 6 o'clock. We have a presentation that we're going to do right off the bat and we'll give it to Darius. Control D, Darius.
And that's all I have to say about that. Congratulations. Thank you all. I would like to welcome tonight, we have Isabel Brown, a senior here at Frontier, and her parents, Beth Brown and Eric Brown, and Frontier Regional School Districts, 2020 Superintendent Academic Excellence Award recipient is Isabel Brown, a senior from Deerfield, Mass. Kind of a quick overview about Isabel during this Brown's years at Frontier Regional. She has maintained a maximum honors and has a 4.45 GPA. In addition to her academic success, she is a serving as president of the Student Council and has been a member since 2016. She has been in the class government since 2019 and was a founding member and has been president of Interact, a community service club that was developed in 2019. Ms. Brown has also been a member of the Drama Club since 2016 with leading roles in both Annie and Harvey. She also has been in the Frontier Marching Band and Women's Ensemble since 2015, has been a sectional leader and a member of the Band Council for two years, and a member of the Frontier Jazz Baron since 2017, and has participated in the Quabin Music Valley Festival in 2017, 19, and 20, and then the Pioneer Valley Symphony Youth Orchestra in 2018, and the Amherst Community Band since 2016. Quite a musician as well. Isabel has received maximum honors in every quarter since 2015. It was the winner of the Swim Team Spirit Award in 2019, the Medusa Mythology Exam Award in 2018 and 2019, the National Latin Exam Award in 2018, and the Bashalom Book Award in 2020. So I said all these wonderful statistics and facts about why Isabel should be selected for this board, but what we're missing here, I guess, is the is the human one. Isabel is just a fantastic person. For those who don't know her, you should get to know her. She represents all the values that Frontier wants to see in our students. And, you know, I got a couple quotes from her teachers. Ms. Barnett stated, "She brings so much life to her learning. She seems almost alive when she's challenged and connected. She enjoys talking about the nuances of the arts and finding deeper meaning in what she is learning." Ms. Moore, great P government teacher, said, "Isabel is not only a great student, but a wonderfully creative and curious person. She has many talents and truly enjoys learning. She's a pleasure to have in class." Isabel is planning on majoring in mathematics after leaving Frontier, is considering Notre Dame University, Lehigh, Holy Cross, Clarkson, Case Western Reserve, and Rensselaer Polytech Institute. Well, I'm hoping, I imagine she is too, that she'll be able to choose from any of those, and I, and any of those would be a wonderful fit for her and would be honored to have her. So I would wish her the best, but she has one more semester with us. I do want to recognize the 2020-21 Superintendent Academic Excellence Award is Isabel Brown.
Could she unmute herself and come on the screen?
Yep, there she is.
Thank you so much. Hi.
Hi.
You normally have to give an acceptance speech. This is our first time doing it digitally, so it's kind of an interesting way. It's a little bit, obviously, less formal and being in a room gathered by people, but I do have your award here and I kind of will pass it right underneath the keyboard too. I actually will save this in hopes that our senior assembly for awards night will be in person. I'll be able to hand this to you in person then, usually before we kind of hand it back and forth. Unfortunately, Isabel also did not get the wonderful chicken dinner at the tech school to meet the other recipients in Western Mass. It's been one of those other things that were was chopped, was chopped due to COVID. So, but you truly, Isabel, you were, I couldn't have given this to a better student. You were what we, what we wish to have all our students be like at Frontier, and thank you. So I guess the second round of applause.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd be proud of you.
Very.
Good.
So that can be awarded.
I'd give you a standing ovation, but those don't look good on Google Meet at all.
Well, thank you for, thank you for winning the award and doing a great job in school and, you know, it sounds like you like music. So hopefully, hopefully music will be in your future.
That would be nice. One of the things I was looking at with the colleges was a pep band or marching band for school.
I bet you can get some good recommendations from people. Well, thanks for coming on.
Thanks, Isabel.
Take care.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're going to review some minutes tonight. We got a few of them. We have a regular meeting from December 8th and two special meetings from December 10th and December 29th. Like to approve. Move to approve, Mr. Chair. Is that you, Phil?
Yeah.
Thanks, Phil. Roll call. Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Olivia?
Yes.
I'm not looking at my screen. I'm typing. Sorry. Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Damien?
Yes, and I'll just note, I was there for the first two you mentioned, and the last one, the 29th, I had missed, but yes.
Okay. Keith?
Yes.
And Melissa? She's saying yes. Where is she? She was here a second ago. Missy? Oh, you're on mute, Missy. You can just wave.
Sorry. Yeah, I also wasn't around for the last Board of Health meeting, which...
29th?
Yeah. I mean, I got there, but I got there after we had done our...
I think you could still approve the minutes. Correct me if I'm wrong, Bill.
I, usually, if you weren't there, you abstained, usually.
That's kind of what I, so you can put me, yes, and then abstain for the last one. Thanks.
Sure. And Bill, you're the last one.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Judy, I guess, just for the same as Missy, same. Yes, for the first few, and abstain in the last one.
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Where's Olivia? I'm not Olivia. Where's Shelley? I'm sorry.
I'm here.
You want to give a financial report, please? Been a busy night already, so.
So 15 warrants were reviewed by Mr. Hala. Thank you for coming in and working with Dawn on that. The total was $1,546,145.36. And I did share with you the expense reports. I'm happy to take questions if you have them before I keep going.
Shelley, another question about the stats, but I had the same trouble. I couldn't open the, those reports either.
Okay. That's interesting that you've never had issue before.
No, everything comes over from Gmail to Comcast, except those reports say, "I need your permission," and when I click on it, it denies me access.
Okay. I'll do what I can to fix that next time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So we continue to monitor savings or overages and accounts, but there's no concerns to report. You know, we're just kind of keeping track of things to see if by the end of the year, we can reallocate some expenses back to our revolving funds, but nothing major to report there on general fund. I did give you another school lunch update. We've been talking about that month to month. Our net income year-to-date in the school lunch program is a negative $22,000. Because we did have a little surplus at the start of the year, the current balance in the revolving fund is a negative $13,640. So again, something we're going to have to rectify by the end of the year. I don't anticipate that that's going to change. Based on projections, we're going to be looking at ending the year probably closer to a negative $30,000 balance there. One thing new to report on this month, as we started talking about next year's budget, we took a much closer look at school choice enrollments, and our school choice numbers do look to be down right now compared to last year. Where we ended the fiscal year, they look at the June 30th number to project what you're going to get the following year, but then come the new year, they look at October 1st. So I do expect that we'll have an adjustment there. Some of that, the decrease in money, is related to a decrease in special education claims, but some of it is also directly related to students no longer being enrolled. George and I did talk about what the reasons for that could be. We don't always necessarily track that, but we do think that perhaps some students went back to their home school or their home district instead of school choicing, or maybe our homeschooling instead. And then on a positive note, we've requested reimbursement from the four towns of almost $100,000 for COVID-related expenses. Several of the towns have already let me know that they're going on the next warrant, so we'll be able to replenish our primarily school choice account, but some general funds were used to prepay for COVID expenses. And there is a small amount of funds that we haven't requested yet because we're still waiting for a couple of things, so it won't be another significant chunk, but there is some money still out there that we'll get back. Not far ahead for an update.
I heard Conway has some extra money in COVID that they're dying to get rid of.
Burning a hole in our pockets, I tell you.
Conway is welcome to contribute greater than their share to Frontier Regional.
Help us with our lunch program, like $22,000 or something, because they have COVID, so, you know.
Sorry, Phil. To be really honest, if the choice is contributing more than our fair share or sending it back, I think the whole town would vote to contribute more than our fair share, despite the fact that it would be Deerfield, Whately, and Sundland who would be benefiting.
We would thank you, Phil, from Whately.
Phil, could you start that conversation between Tom and I and get that rolling for us?
Yeah, sure. Sure.
Oh, does anybody else have anything for Shelley at all? Okay. Next is public comment. I just asked Dawn if we had one, and she said, "Yeah, I sent it to you." So I have it on my phone. If you could bear with me, the print's a little small, and it's from CPAC, and it's a nice one. We just had the same one, and Whately basically thanking us. But FRSU38CPAC would like to thank the members of this committee for their ongoing support in special education students. We hope that you will continue to give special education, other vulnerable learners, the option to access in-person instruction regardless of what model is in use for the rest of the school community. And it's, thank you from Holly, A.J., Carrie, and Crystal from CPAC. So it was a nice letter, and, you know, that's good. Olivia, is your, is your daughter around tonight?
So don't care. I am.
Hey, you guys are on one screen tonight.
Yay.
What do you have for us?
So we haven't had a meeting since the last time I presented. We did try to do Spirit Week, but it was virtual, so kids tried to participate the best they could. We did have Pyjama Day and Twin Day. Not really sure how that went because we were all virtual, so we tried to make the best of it. Then the students are, some of them are excited to go back hybrid on the 11th, and some of them are not, but that's to be expected. And that's about all I have.
Well, thank you. And maybe next month we'll have some other news that's going on. You're doing a great job.
Thank you. I hope so.
Unfinished business, Anti-Racism and Equality Committee update.
I do have to know if, like, Pyjama Day should be the opposite, like Dress Up for School Day?
Yeah, from the top down, like, from the top down.
Can't be front of her now, right? Exactly. The Anti-Racism Equity Committee is going to pass this month because they haven't had a lot of workdays since the last time they gave a report, and they are gearing up student activities and such, and they're going to be looking forward to reporting that in February. So it's going to be staying on our agenda, but they don't have a report for this month.
And, and you want to continue on with COVID?
Yeah, COVID up. I mean, this, this particular group, this is another one of our standing items on our agenda. We, we obviously all met last week. I think everybody's up to speed that we're watching those numbers this week. So far, they're okay, but if we're going to get a spike from New Year's, you're going to start seeing it, probably today, tomorrow, and Thursday. So continuing from there. So, you know, we made that call, and the Boards of Health have been in conversation with. And so, you know, Thursday evening is kind of like, well, go around, call the chairs of Boards of Health and find out what they're feeling, if they're going to call meetings on Friday or not to make a decision to go remote, continue remote, or in place, we are expecting to go back to hybrid on the 11th. So they would have a meeting to, to continue the remote if they thought the indicators weren't such. So that's the game plan that we have now. So that's kind of the COVID update. Oh, we do have, we hope to have the, we had all the 38 teachers, not teachers, nurses have been tested. We took a test in training, rather, so we're ready to do instant testing at all the elementary schools, and we hope that Frontier trained by the end of the week. They're trained to train their models, so it shouldn't be a problem. So we'll be ready to go when we go back to school to have those tests available and ready to roll out as well for those who are symptomatic in school. We will get an immediate test. So that's kind of the COVID update.
Bob, this is kind of a COVID-related question, but I trust everybody saw the email from the gentleman involved in the hockey programming from Greenfield. And I was a little annoyed when I read that because I thought we had made it clear over the last month and a half that we make the program decisions and the Board of Health makes the decisions about the physical part of the building. And I want to reemphasize that in whatever way possible, that, to make sure that everybody understands, including this gentleman that wrote the email, the Board of Health is not deciding whether or not we play sports. They're only deciding whether or not we can use the building to play sports in. And I can't emphasize that enough. We have to, you know, we've tried to make that clear, and I thought we did, but apparently this gentleman didn't get the memo. So I just wanted to reemphasize that fact that we are working together with the Board of Health making decisions, but they are not pulling the program strings here. We do that.
Thanks, Bill. Since you're talking.
Actually, you know, not only that, Bill, but in the case of the hockey program, it's not even our Board of Health that would have anything to do with it. It's the Greenfield Board of Health because that's where they play.
That's correct.
Missy, do you have your hand up?
I do. I'm curious whether or not, Darius, if you have had any communication in regards to as we move forward with the vaccine and teachers become eligible, if that's something that the school is working on coordinating, or if that's something that's being coordinated elsewhere?
The question, right now, we have not been contacted by the state about how that's going to be unrolling. I think you're kind of seeing, you're hearing a lot of the national attention on it, but I think we're also seeing that locally, you know, I'm trying to get a figure out of how well or poorly Massachusetts is doing it. You might even know better than I in that area.
I will say that we have been doing very well in terms of rollout with the vaccine.
So right now, I believe I just saw that first responders are kind of the next one ticking on the list, and then I believe after that, it's going to be older, you know, older citizens, and then it's going to go into phase two, which includes teachers. So they haven't given us any kind of rollout model for that. I am kind of confident that Franklin County has, does have their kind of their act together, and they have been talking about vaccination distribution since, I think, September as part of some of those meetings that we've been a part of. And they started doing that with the flu vaccination rollout. They were purposely thinking about, what do, how are we going to do this on a greater level? We also have the ability to store the vaccination in Franklin County and in the Deerfields. Am I sure? I call the Deerfield Office of, you know, the Boards of Health to have the refrigeration ability as well. So I have a feeling we will be probably labeled as one of those sites, or I hope, I think, you know, we'll talk, I'll have a conversation with Carolyn to see what she hears about that. Carolyn Ness would know. Carolyn, as you guys may know, she runs the Mohawk Coalition of Boards of Health. So, you know, anything that happens in Franklin County is going to be going across her, kind of her bow as well. So we're fortunate to have that as well. So I don't know when it is, but if we can keep on the timeline, it should be, it should be February, you know, so. I'm being optimistic. They said two months, February. They said February, March in the report, but I, you know, I'll give the first month in my statement.
And, Darius, to bounce off Missy's question, and maybe we don't even have any in this community, but how will we address, and maybe this is a student question too, I assume there's a small population of students and maybe teachers who are anti-vaccination, and how will we address that part of it?
Excellent question. I'll get the answer for you of that. It's going to be a legal question because, because look at us as employers. If we have employees that refuse vaccination but also want accommodations, if the question, the question is, I mean, you can refuse vaccination, but you come to work, right? You know, so the question is, can you force someone to get vaccinated and by the employer? And the legal, it's being spun around. I've seen it as part of the legal chats. They're talking about, they're starting to hit the listserv. It's one of those things that, you know, I'll get the answer to when I have it, and I'll be bringing to all of you about how we approach employers, what are requirements around vaccination, what are the options for our employees? We want to make sure we have all their, their legal rights in mind, and then what our rights are as employers and for safety of all involved. So excellent question, but it's a loaded one right on the answer.
All right, thanks.
I don't know if this helps at all, but from, from the hospital standpoint, there were some concerns about how many employees might feel uncomfortable getting the vaccine initially, and by far, the response has been much more positive that people have been, have been kind of knocking down doors to try to get in line to get this vaccine or one of the two of the vaccines that are out there now. And that has been a welcome, a welcome scene from, from hospital administration perspective because then it makes that, that smaller portion of people who aren't getting the vaccine less likely to have a significant impact on the benefit of having people vaccinated, so.
But don't, don't we have a policy on vaccinations already on childhood vaccine, childhood disease vaccinations?
So Phil, you bring up an extra, these are all good. It's a good night to talk about this because there's not a lot on the agenda, but the, it's a good question because the vaccinations are for 16 and older right now, I believe. And so what are we going to do with our younger population? And then, you know, some of these, some of our COVID, we're going to have to get direction about how are we treating, you know, if all the adults are vaccinated, are we still wearing masks? And I think the early indicators are yes, out of the gate, it's going to be that way. And so, you know, how is that, we're going to have to, we're going to have to go through all those steps moving forward. And so that's what our spring, at least we're building towards something instead of defencing something. I don't know. It's, I'm happy we're headed in that direction, but those are all problems we're going to have to face.
Please wear a mask if you get vaccinated. We are not there yet.
Right.
A lot of us are all the way at the end of the line for that vaccination, too.
Which is why it's really important, if you get the vaccine, that you wear a mask because it's not known yet whether or not you can still spread it to somebody else.
Yep, yep.
Hey, Bill, you want to give, give everybody a little update on the proposed budget? What, what do you know?
Yeah, we had our first meeting tonight, and as everyone would expect, everything is, this is going to be a more protracted process than usual because nothing, a lot of things aren't happening. State numbers aren't being generated. Cherry sheet numbers aren't generated. We don't, we don't know a lot about a lot of things at this point in time. So we had an initial meeting, and we're just kind of circling the airport. We have nothing to release. We have no information to put out because we just, there isn't any enough to make an intelligent presentation at this time.
Does anybody have a question for Bill before, I mean, he's short and sweet. I mean, there isn't anything, but if somebody has another question, other than Conway giving us some more money, maybe. And another brighter note, Yankee Candle, somebody say something? Yankee Candle has made a nice donation to Frontier again, and George, you want to come on on?
And that was a part of my report, yeah, Bob. So we, once again, so Yankee Candle has been generous enough to donate $4,000 to Frontier. So, you know, it's a wonderful thing. So, so, yeah, so Phil, that's going to, that'll take a dent out of some of the money that you're going to, you're going to be pushing our ways.
Hey, so we need, we need a motion and a vote on, on, on the donation. So if somebody wants to make a motion?
Move to accept the donation, Mr. Chair, with gratitude.
Phil seconded, Olivia seconded, and roll call, Judy?
Bob?
Yes.
Lynn? I'm sorry, is she waving? Lynn, there you go. She's saying yes. I can tell. It's in her eyes. Olivia?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yep.
Hi. Good job.
Thank you. I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year. Hopefully, 2021 will be a better year. I turned 64 on Saturday, and I couldn't get, couldn't wait to get rid of 2020. It's me personally, part of the year was all right, but the rest of it was pretty crappy. So I'm hoping that 2021 will be better for everybody. Everybody will get vaccinated. Life is good, hopefully, in 2021, so. Any, I don't think we have anything from the collaborative, Lynn. There's no meeting. George, you, I saw your principal report. You want to say anything else?
No, that's okay. Thank you, Bob.
Darius?
Yep, I got a brief announcement as well, some announcements. One, I also had a birthday on Saturday. Me and Bob share the same birthday. We can't wait to party together next year. I do also want to recognize that, and we'll put it on the, the next agenda. It came out, we got this probably at the same time we were creating these agendas, but Deerfield Academy, Deerfield Academy donated $25,000 to our Deerfield and Frontier School Service Program, split between the two programs, to help offset the loss that we had this year. I really wanted to thank, you know, John Austin, the head of school at Deerfield Academy for making this donation possible. So we bring that formally, but it was in the paper, I believe, and so I want to make sure that I get that announcement out there, but we'll, we'll both accept that formally at the next meeting. The next thing on my list is MCAS. We did get a report out from DESI today regarding MCAS. They are going to be moving forward with MCAS this spring. You'll start to hear all the talk about this. This is controversial in the sense that some people are concerned about loss of class time, especially if we're getting students back in person this spring. But they, they have decided that grades three through eight, they're going to give a shortened sessions. So they'll affect our middle school, and those obviously in the elementary committees, with kind of a sampling from each portion of the MCAS assessment. You know, the big, the big, the thought coming from DESI is that we really be able to need to be able to take in an assessment that we've used through the years to take a look at where our students are and how, you know, COVID has affected them. Like, I do receive some emails about, you know, some community push that we should be not testing them. And a part of me wants to know, a large part of me wants to know how our kids are doing, and what are the gaps going to be? And how are we going to, you know, what are we going to need to do to prepare that? And using a test like MCAS that we have tracked over time, we'll be able to see trends and that kind of thing. So the opportunity to termination, you know, basically passing the MCAS to graduate. They've also tied that, that you can connect that to courses within the schools with passing grades. And it looks like they're going to move the science test and the, the regular administration of the test. Now, we have two of them because we didn't have 10th grade test last year till later this spring as well. So there's going to be a lot of work for Sarah Mitchell regarding the amount of testing that's taking place. So any questions on that? And I can send you, you know, they'll send out the, the notice I got from the, from DESI if you have any questions on that.
So does that mean that our current 10th graders will take the science as well as last year, the juniors, because they didn't get it last year? Because there's usually a 10th grade MCAS.
I believe, if Sarah, you're there, you're the MCAS queen. I believe, if Sarah, you're there, you're the MCAS queen?
Yeah, so we're, we're still working out some of those details, um, because our 10th graders, uh, last year when they were in ninth grade, they took the SciTech class, and so we had them all geared up to take the SciTech test last spring, and obviously it didn't happen. Um, so we have a limited number of students that are gonna be taking the biology this year, and so we're going to try to determine what makes the most sense for that class, and it may come down to a student-by-student decision. Um, so we may prep some of them to take the SciTech if the state is still gonna allow us to, um, do that test. Um, and then have some of students that are already enrolled in biology take the biology. So I think it's gonna come, we're really gonna be looking at student by student to determine that.
Thank you.
The other, the other small note I forgot to mention on that was they're not gonna hold schools accountable to the test, the accountability rankings that they had, you know, uh, those schools that were in, you know, you know, received, were failure, needs improvement, that. They're not gonna do the ranking. They're gonna carry your ranking forward, so they're not gonna use that, um, you know, their ranking of schools. And I, I really, I think, I'm not worried about that kind of thing. I, I really think you look at the disruption of education across the state, and our district's done very well um, comparative to, and I think I've said this a thousand times to you folks regarding, um, you know, the, you know, more, you know, more urban districts and the districts that just don't have the supports at home, um, help students, you know, with remote learning. Um, and so you have, you know, you have other, you know, more urban districts with, you know, it's a rate, participation rates below 50%, you know, uh, this massive, and, and just the size of their schools alone, you know, their size of schools, districts that are larger than Franklin County, you know what I mean, where you have less than 50% participating every day in classes. I mean, you're talking about the impact that's gonna have on education. I'm, I'm not worried about standardized testing in our district in the sense of, um, publicity-wise, or concerns of, you know, our, our marks being okay. Um, I think we'll use it as, you know, as a tool, um, to make sure we get, we're, needs are, needs are met. Um, oh, I'm, I'm talking my report. Um, and then the next thing I want to say, welcome, is I want to welcome, uh, Jeff McDonald as our new cert- food service director. Um, Jeffrey comes from us from, uh, UMass Amherst Food Service, and he began work with a little bit of overlap with Mary right before the break, and Mary and her family, as we all know, has left us, and we wish her well, and welcome Jeff aboard. It's his first full week. I didn't, I'll bring him here to introduce him to all of you, but I figured in his first week on the job to, to put him to one school committee meeting after another, um, probably not the nicest way to bring him on board. So obviously, bring him here to introduce you, but we're very happy to have him aboard. He hit the ground running. Um, and we think we gotta really hire him, so.
What's his last name again? Jeff what? Nice.
And Jeffrey, uh, is, is G. Jeffrey.
Jeffrey with a G.
G and Jeffrey with a G.
Yep.
And then the last thing on my superintendent report is just a, a courtesy reminder to school committee members that, um, we do get a lot of information regarding students, employees, and that kind of thing regarding COVID and any other things that we discuss, and I just want people to make sure that, you know, we do not use those names when we talk to, we post, we talk online, we talk to other people, even if, even if it's assumed, try not to use people's names when, when it ties to, you know, their protections, even though it may be considered public knowledge. You're in a position where your employers, if you're talking about your employees or students, um, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, um, be doing that. So if you're on an online chatter, that kind of stuff, make sure you don't um, use people's names and that kind of stuff. Just a general reminder, um, out there. I'm giving it to all the school committees. Nobody's done anything wrong or anything like that. I just, it's, there's a lot of time. We, we start talking about, oh, did you hear about so-and-so and that kind of stuff? Um, we just have to be careful, um, that we are, you know, we are bound by confidentiality of those things. Um, and sometimes that information gets shared with you, um, and it shouldn't have been, and we need to stop it at each step of the way, so. Thank you, and that's it.
And we're not gonna have an executive session tonight, and need a motion to adjourn. So move, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it. Um, Bob?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yeah.
Phil?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Judy, yes. Mary?
Yes.
Amyann?
Yes.
Keith?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
And Olivia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Everybody have a good week.
You too.
Thanks. Happy birthday.
You both.
Yes.